So it is six o'clock. We will call the meeting to order. All members are present. In to regular meeting, it's the second, uh, fourth Tuesday of the month, which is our six P M. Meeting. Let's start with pledge of allegiance.
Here, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice in all.
Great. Let me just get. All right. So the first thing we're gonna do is go to comments from the public and the one member of the public.
I'm here and I made it.
Is here and it's, uh, I only, I know you left a message earlier today. I'll let you introduce yourself.
So, um, my name is Louisa Tucci. I actually recently moved to Old Saybrook about a year and a half ago. Um, from Madison and I absolutely love it. I want to compliment you all. The town is very well run. I actually was recently in this room, meeting with your pro rate judge to change my name. And she's very knowledgeable and helpful. I've dealt with, um, beach and rec. And just all the departments have been great. The senior center is terrific and my, my real reason for being here is to represent the literacy volunteers Valley Shore, um, which is a nonprofit organization uh, that I have been tutoring for, um, for the past three years. Um, and they are a five oh one C three. And I'm also on the board. So we're sending board members out to all of our member towns, the towns that we service, uh, which is basically Lyme all the way through Guilford. And, um, just to kind of remind you that we're here and working in your community all the time. Actually, uh, probably our largest number of tutors, uh, reside in Old Saybrook. We have almost fifty tutors that, um, live in your town. Um, and basically what we do is we provide one-on-one, um, free tutoring, uh, English as a second language, or even also people who are native speakers that want to increase their literacy skills. Um, and, uh, we've been around since nineteen eighty. The Westbrook Library is so very kind. They, um, give us the basement of their, an office in the basement of their library facility for free, which is terrific. So we really run on a very much a shoestring budget in terms of we only have one, um, part-time employee. And, um, basically all of our funding comes from towns like you. Um, and United Way and brands and donations from individuals. So I actually had them look up because we all volunteered to go to the towns where we live to speak. And I had them look up Old Saybrook. And unfortunately, it looks like, I think, based on what they told me from the office, that, um, twenty seventeen was the last time we received a donation from Lucy and it was only five hundred dollars. So I have to say I was a little bit surprised by that. Maybe you forgot about us. Um, because all of the towns always donate consistently every year and usually within a thousand to two or three thousand dollars. So I think that Old Saybrook could, um, remember us next year, maybe in your fiscal budget. That would be great. Um, and I brought a sample book for you to see the type of, so basically all of the funding that most towns give us would go towards a book like this, which is a workbook that, um, deals with conversation skills. And these are basically people who are working in your, our communities, are working at restaurants, hotels, local businesses. Um, and basically these are conversation type, um, chapters where they learn how to speak to somebody in a doctor's office or D M B or a school teacher, which by the way, I'm also a teacher at Saint John's. So I not only live in town and work in town and I love it here. So, uh, but I really just wanted to come and let you know that we're looking for funding. We're also looking for more, um, tutors. If anybody in the Zoom world there that would like to be a tutor. And also business owners, to let business owners know that, uh, we provide these free, um, services. If they have any employees that, um, could use these, you know, tutoring opportunities.
Okay. Very good. So, um, presumably you have an executive director of the organization or not?
So we do not have a paid executive director. We have a board.
Okay. So the board, I would recommend the board send a letter.
Okay.
Um, anytime, uh, we start formulating the budget now. So anytime.
All right.
And then it will be considered for the twenty seven fiscal year.
We're already, we're working way in advance.
Yeah.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you so much.
Request for donations.
I would say anytime, but before February.
Before February. Right. Okay.
So, um, that being said, um, the town receives many requests for donations. I just want you to know that. Um, and we've added a few over the years. Uh, the list could be endless if we wanted it to be. And I don't know what other towns do. It would be interesting for me to see. But, you know, we contribute probably, I think about six grand to the Connecticut Conservancy. We now contribute to Hope Partnership. We can contribute to our Historical Society, which is a five oh one C three. Uh, there was, uh, the soup kitchens, Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Pantry.
Transit.
What's that?
Nine towns transit.
That's not, that is not what I would consider. You're right. It's a political subdivision that we contribute. That's a much larger contribution and the estuary would fit into that category too. But there are many smaller donations that we, uh, contribute to. And we get, we get requests.
Of course you do. I would never hate those other.
Not to diminish anything that you're doing on your end. Okay?
Absolutely.
But send us a request and maybe we can get it back in.
Awesome. It was so nice meeting you. Thank you for letting me come. I really appreciate it. And good luck with the rest of your meeting. I'm off the boat.
All right. I tell you which way to vote, but Matt's here. No, I'm kidding. And Matt, no. Uh, thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
So, all right. So that's public comment. Comments from the selectmen.
I have a couple of things, nothing really big or long. Uh, so first, last week, uh, the Connecticut Department of Housing and Connecticut Housing Finance Authority had their, uh, housing conference and Chris Costa, our land use, uh, director was on one of the panels. Uh, everybody at D O H and Chaffa said that she did great. And so I just want to commend Chris for representing Old Saybrook. Um, out there in the public on, you know, relevant issues that are in the headlines every day with such professionalism. It's, it's great that we have her. Um, people were, you know, really positive uh, about just the wealth of knowledge that she has. So I just think it's.
She just has it.
So it, so it, I, it's just worth making sure that it's noted that Chris is doing a good job and it's, it's visible out there. And so I think people should get commended when we can.
Um, thanks.
So there's that. Uh, the other piece is just as I'm wrapping up, you know, on my, the Board of Selectmen, as you both know, um, I haven't been, uh, accepting the stipend and that needs to be donated. Um, so I spoke with Leanne last week after the Board of Finance. Um, and so the proposal is that fifty percent, there's a, there will be a balance for the, a prorated amount of three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and forty cents.
I see.
From the beginning of this fiscal year until my last date serving, um, next month. So I'm asking that fifty percent be put into the Mariners Way Fund and fifty percent go to the apartment by sinking fund.
Leanne, I'm gonna leave that to you, if you understand.
I, I have already been working with Matt and it's all under control. We, um, has successfully donated his other salary requests and we'll just follow the same format and it's, those requests aren't a problem at all.
Great. Thanks so much, Leanne.
Thank you.
Yeah. And both, you know, both of those are things that I've been, um, very vocal about over the last six years. So I thought it made sense to just put the money back into the town in that way. And then the final piece is just on, on housing. I, I had the ability to sit and listen to a presentation yesterday on housing. And it was just a, uh, another mechanism that jumped out to me, um, wasn't a, a housing incentive fund at the town level. But what they were doing was they were doing a five dollar surcharge per thousand dollars of expenses that come in on a building permit. So whether it's a renovation on a house or, or, or any building or new construction, but five dollars per every thousand dollars, um, that then goes into a housing incentive fund that the town can then use, whether it's towards.
What is that? An opt-in type of thing?
An opt-in type of, um, tool that, so we, I, we have, you know, we had put some money towards a, a housing fund last year. Um, right? From.
Yes.
From, I think, some of our surplus funds and also from ARPA. And so it'd be a way to build that fund up so we could use it for different projects as the, the housing task force, you know, starts to identify. So that way we're not just stuck with one amount, but we have a way to continue to bring.
I, I'm not familiar with that. So maybe if you want to send it my way, I'll take.
Yeah, I'm happy to send it your way. That's all I got.
Sarah, are you waiting for that?
Well, just.
I thought maybe you were waiting for that. We do have a, um.
Chat with Paul?
A resolution.
Oh, you do? Oh, would you like me to sign it now?
Can we skip ahead to that with the?
Are we putting all these?
So this is, um, this is, um, a re-upping of the steep grant that we received for Route One Sidewalk, which by the way, began tomorrow. And, uh, the state needed the resolution that we did once. It's a twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two, we're just redoing it. Um, and it's resolved that I authorized to accept on behalf of the town of Old Saybrook, a steep grant in mind of five hundred thousand to construct sidewalks on Route One from Westbrook to Route One, one sixty-six eastward. And we, I can enter into all the agreements. So, uh, that is the steep grant resolution, uh, item D. I'll make that motion that that resolution be, uh, adopted, uh, which is, like I said, just a kind of a, a reiteration of a resolution that we adopted several years ago, probably.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on that? And that project was supposed to start Monday, but it is starting tomorrow.
Cutting, waxing with a saw.
That was front. No, no, no. This is out by Dairy Queen.
Okay. All right. So.
They're actually starting tomorrow on that project, the Route One Sidewalks project. That's about one point five million dollar sidewalk project. I'll get to that in a second.
All right. Just a question. Is there an end date on this budget? And does this include us from like the next round of steep because it's been sitting for so long or?
It, no, we got a, we got a eight hundred thousand dollars.
For the soccer field. Yeah.
And I anticipate that the Ferry Road Soccer Field and this one will be wrapping up by the time maybe steep grants are eligible next year.
Great.
Because they're both like, ready to go.
Great. Thank you.
It is good. So moved and seconded all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You can have that and deliver it tomorrow if you'd like.
To, to Dan.
Yeah.
Are you gonna put all these items on the November the twenty-fourth town meetings?
What do you mean all these items?
The ones you're gonna.
Yes, we are putting two other business items.
But I mean, you're not gonna have a, a town meeting between.
No, we are not. Yes, it's gonna be the annual town meeting.
Oh, that would be.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. Scott, did you have anything?
I don't have any selected, uh, selectmen comments prepared.
Matt, you were talking about a housing.
It's a housing incentive growth fund. So I'll, I'll send you an email with the kind of mechanics and.
Okay. Um, we made an offer, an offer has been accepted, uh, for a new fire marshal. Um, we had two really good candidates, um, and both would be retiring from their current job. And, uh, we had two rounds of interviews with the two of them. And we, uh, made an offer to one of not, there's a couple loose ends that have to be wrapped up. So I'm not gonna announce who it is yet. Um, highly qualified person. There was a committee, uh, by the way, the fire marshal work is getting done beautifully right now. I haven't gotten one phone call. Things are getting wrapped up. Very nicely by Phil Coco, who we appointed the last time, I think, or maybe four weeks ago.
Yeah, last part may.
And I can assure you that things are being jumped on very quickly and it's been a pleasure. Um, and, um, that's all I'm gonna say about that, but we are.
You said the offer has been made and accepted or just made?
It has been accepted. It came back today, but we have to do a background check, drug test. So I'm, you know, until that's done.
Understood.
Yeah. And, uh, so, uh, that is super exciting. Uh, the Route One Sidewalks begin tomorrow, Bill Layden. Uh, one was a little bitter on that. That project, you'll see him out by Baum Avenue. That's about where they're gonna start. Uh, the idea was for them to start now on the Dairy Queen end and work towards Westbrook. So that way, next May, they're not at the Dairy Queen and in that center of town. They'll be more towards the west end of town. There's no good way to do this, but they move quickly. Um, the other thing, Scott, that you mentioned is the crosswalks began today. We had a, praise Jesus, right? Um, we had a onsite meeting yesterday. That was the first meeting. I thought they were gonna start yesterday with saw cutting. Today you saw them saw cutting.
Or at least moving a machine that.
No, they were saw cutting. They were saw cutting the, what's gonna be the landing area. So they want to work for the next month and the goal is to have it done by Thanksgiving. We shall see if it does it. They get one or two done. I don't know. I want to see progress. I want to see a good time. And they have yet to wrap up Chucker's No Pot Dam, but they punch list. Like they have to put a lock on a gate or something, you know? And I think we were really on them to get that done. So I think they're good. Same company. That's why I said they. Um, and, um, Sustainable Saybrook had a, an event today. I couldn't make it. I'm actually going on their board. C C M needed and someone, they approached me and I said, yeah, there are Zoom meetings four times a year. So I'll see, I told me and I'll see how I do with it and whether I'm useful to them. If I am, I'll stay on. If I'm not, we'll see. But, um, I'm trying to think what else. But other than that, I mean, Matt, I think at the last meeting, we were appreciative of everything you've done. I meant to go out and get you a cupcake. I forgot. Sorry. I know. I know. A beer? How about a beer? Uh, so, uh, look, I mean, you know, you're, uh, a smart, I've, I've been calling you a young man. You're a lot younger than me, but.
Appreciate it.
Um, and, you know, I am truly excited for you and your position at the state. Because I know you're doing cool stuff and you're making a huge impact statewide. So, um, I think we get to appreciate you both did over the last six years on this board and we get to continue to appreciate your work at the state level. So I want to say thank you for everything you've done for this board. You've brought ideas forward. Um, they've been considered. I hope you think fairly. Um, and, uh, you know, whether we've acted on certain things or not, at least had an opportunity to discuss them. The commercial blight ordinance is on here. Hopefully you guys reviewed it. What I will do is maybe send it out to the other boards at this point and see how they react to it. Um, oh, and speaking of that, uh, the Doc and Dine lease and purchase and sale agreement is now in our court and there's a little, been a little bit of delay on our lawyer. Um, he got a little wrapped up in something else at the end of last week. I fully anticipate sending to them a clean version of a lease and a purchase and sale agreement and let them react to it. Apparently we're in agreement. That's all I know. Uh, but I will take, um, I will tell you that the ball is not in their court right now. The ball is in our court and I anticipate that happening. But anyway, thank you for your service to, to the town, everything you've done, and I want to wish you best of luck. I know we'll see you. But best of luck at the state level.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with Jane.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, been glad to be on the board with you both, uh, last six years. Felt a lot longer than that sometimes. Uh, but I appreciated that we didn't always agree on everything, but we had respectful conversation. I do feel that, you know, ideas were considered and, um, do feel that I was able to contribute as the, uh, minority party member here on the board to, um, you know, some really good things that the town has been doing over the last six years. So I will continue to, uh, to come and show up and make public comments and, and then just, you know, peace out and leave.
Then I did share my acknowledgements to the last meeting. I certainly do appreciate, Matt, your participation and, and your enthusiasm and obvious knowledge and, and outreach to others could, to ensure that people's thoughts and voice are heard. And I think you did an outstanding job of, of representing people in that format.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. Enough about that. Um, so we will move on, uh, to approve all the minutes, um, Board of Selectmen from October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, I put the, I didn't hear from either one of you.
Yeah, sorry. I don't.
That's okay.
So I'm ready. My head no problem.
And if there, if, I mean, this is your last meeting. So do you have any comments on?
Yeah, my, my only comment, so under comments from the selectmen, if we could just re, um, rephrase that first sentence to, uh, Mr. Police, he commented on the swearing in of the new police chief. And instead of what a nice ceremony it was, and, uh, commended the police commission and first selectman on.
Okay.
On a strong process. On a strong selection.
On selection and process. Okay. Um, we won't make the motion. We'll just say with that amendment. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, with that, uh, I'll take a motion to, um, accept the minutes.
I made that motion.
Second. Okay. All those in favors. All right. So we will move on to business before the board, item number A, discussion and possible action to approve the modification. Two D Town's pension plan document, just to put it on the table so we don't forget. I'm gonna make that motion. Is there a second? Second. Okay. Leanne, why don't you, um, discuss, uh, what you're putting before us?
I'd be happy to. This, um, before you is a recommendation from the Pension and Employee Benefits Board that has, um, approved the changes to the town pension plan document. The, uh, last time that this town document was looked at and updated was back in two thousand and eight. So fifteen years have gone by. Um, the document is meant to be a long-term, um, document. You know, it's not refreshed on a regular basis, but still, over the past, uh, several years, we've, um, had a lot of changes that have affected this document. One, um, being the addition of defined contribution plans. So now we have two different types of retirement plans. The original document contemplated that everyone was in just the defined benefit plan. So we had to incorporate that into the document. And, um, more, we, we have been, uh, this first selectman has been making a lot of changes to the collective, uh, bargaining agreements of the various unions. And most recently, uh, the changes that were made to the police union collective bargaining agreements um, had a few conflicts with the way that the town document, the town pension plan document was written. So that's really what spurred us to, uh, um, make these changes at this point. Uh, the pension board developed a subcommittee of two pension board members, uh, the first selectman and Rowena Moffett and myself. And along with our attorney Reed and Riche, we, uh, painstakingly went through, uh, this entire document. And, um, it is updated. So, um, high level, um, obviously we changed, um, we eliminated any outdated language that was in this document. Uh, we consolidated previous amendments, mostly having to do with defined contribution plan into a single document that made it easier for administration. We didn't have to look at one amendment, amendment and then go back to the document to, um, make sure that we were interpreting it correctly. It's all in one now. Um, and of, of course, we codified a lot of the, um, information that has come about due to the collective bargaining agreements. Um, and made a lot of the, the, um, language in this agreement, um, evergreen, you know? So for example, if the, uh, mortality tables change, that they would automatically use the most recent one. And, um, I think, um, I think those are the major changes. Um, obviously with the police, I think noteworthy is um, the changes to the police department, uh, retirement plans going from twenty-five years, uh, to twenty-three years. Um, to be eligible for normal retirement was, was a fairly significant change. And the fact that we updated their base salary, uh, formula from, um, if they make that normal, if they uh, are with the town for that long, uh, they have a little higher ratio that can be counted towards their retirement program. Um, so there were a lot of changes in here. We, um, actually added, also added an addendum um, so that we could outline some of the variables that change on a regular basis, like interest rates and mortality tables and things like that. So that every year when our actuaries come in, um, if they, uh, make modifications to those or, or they are updated, um, that we can just work with the appendix um, over the longer term as opposed to, uh, making changes in the body of the planned doctrine. So I will say it was a very thorough process. Uh, we, uh, had met with the board pension board on at least three or four meetings to, um, interpret and get feedback from them on all of these changes. And, um, I'm going to stop at this point. It is, um, I, I didn't plan on going over every single change. I'm happy to, uh, do that or answer any questions that you may have.
I mean, this, this has been six months anyway.
Right.
Yeah. Going through, just updated. Needed to be updated. At least. Um, like Leanne said, evergreen language, just removing outdated language, language that conflicted in the document. Uh, we either collective bargaining agreements or just conflicted, uh, within the document. Um, so, uh, Leanne and Rowena really, um, did a deep dive on this. I, I was in and out. And, uh, Pam Fleming from Reed and Riga, um, was just very, very helpful throughout this whole process. So, um, but it needed to be done. It got done and. Any questions for Leanne?
Yeah. Two questions, Leanne. Um, is this first simple one, is this only approved by the Board of Selectmen or does this go to the Board of Finance as well?
It just goes to the Board of Selectmen. It wasn't, the subcommittee, uh, committee is the pension board. Um, they have thoroughly reviewed every single one of these changes and they are putting the, because it's a policy document, it just goes to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then my other question is, so this, the, this document, it does not constrain the town and negotiations, um, the next time we're in a collective bargaining situation on a contract, right? We would just go through that contract negotiation and then make any subsequent changes to this document to reflect that. Like you just incorporated here with the police.
Well, it's, um, yes, the answer is yes. And so what, what we did in particular, uh, there is language in here that says to the extent that a collective bargaining agreement is, um, made and there is a change to the retirement benefits of that selective bargaining unit, that, that, that will, uh, supersede this agreement, that we will automatically be best incorporated into the pension plan doc. So that was part of the evergreen language. So that if there's moving parts, um, the document won't be conflict, will not conflict with other legal documents that, um, have to do with the retirement plan.
Great. Thank you.
It's, Scott.
I've read it. No, I'm most exact. Thanks.
And again, I thank the pension board also for all the work they did on this. Um, as Leanne said, we brought it to them several times to update them. So anyway, it's been moved and seconded, um, and discussed. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I could view. Uh, discussion. Oh, yeah. So, um, this is almost old news at this point, um, to discuss possible action to approve the and the one point eight six six oh oh four from the Fire, um, Department Apparatus Fund for the Purpose of Financing and Pierce Enforcer Aerial Fire Truck. The reason I, we, we agreed that even though we're basically borrowing from our, ourselves, we're borrowing from a bank, but we're paying it back. We're just going negative into an account, in an account. Um, just because number one, there's a third party involved and number two, because it's a large. Um, just because, number one, there's a third party involved and number two, because it's a large expenditure, very large. Where the money is not clearly there to pay back right away, we're going negative in an account. Um, I just think for transparency sake, bring it to town meeting. The Board of Finance approved this, but I don't know that the Board of Selectmen took action, I'm not, did we? I'm not so sure we recommended it to the Board of Finance. It, you know what, I don't have it in front of me, I didn't recall, but um maybe you do, maybe uh. Anyway, what I want to do.
Anyway, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, if we duplicate our efforts, it's not a big deal, uh and it is on the annual town call. So I just want to make sure that we got our eyes and cross our teeth.
That was August, Board of Finance, I have a fire truck um in my nuts, I don't see it on.
So in any event, um, so I'll I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Leanne, do you want to just briefly talk about this? I know you're prepared to.
Um, so the fire department came forth to the Board of Finance and they said that they wanted to buy a fire fire truck. And in in concept, the Board of Finance approved that um contingent upon us coming back with a plan to finance it. We're working with the financing company, we looked at two separate options. One is if you pay for the whole thing upfront or immediately start the financing upfront. The cost of the fire truck was discounted to about one point, about a little less than one point six million dollars. The other option that we had was if we were to defer the financing, because it takes like three or four years to build these uh fire trucks. To a point, uh three years out, um we could defer paying in cash and or financing. Um, but then that would increase the price of the fire truck to about one point eight million. So um, I ran all the scenarios and the recommendation to the Board of Finance was to. Um, immediately start to amortize the vehicle, um so that we could take advantage of the discounts. So the price of the fire truck would be just under one point six million. The annual uh payment is about two hundred and sixty-six thousand. And over time, I mean, we put money towards the fire department, fire department apparatus fund every year as part of the budget. Um, we put about uh a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in there. Um, over time, we're going to increase that amount by about twenty-five thousand dollars per year. As as Carl said, at some point, we're going to go negative in the fund and and that's okay, we are technically quote-unquote borrowing from ourselves. Um, we have run that concept by the auditors and as long as there's appropriate approvals, there's there's no reason why we cannot do that. And so um a combination of borrowing from ourselves, it slightly increasing every year. The amount that we put aside for the fire truck and now um fire truck vehicle, um it will eventually pay itself back. Um, we are just about finished paying for the last fire truck. And so um um we will continue on uh paying for this one, so um in essence have two brand new fire trucks in a. Twenty-year period of time, um with financing in place is is really um a good thing to do for the town. And um.
About seven years, right?
Yeah, yeah, seven years, that's right, seven years is the financing and um. I think uh um I think that's about about the hi, those are the highlights of the financing, I I can get into more detail if you want.
And the la, the most we go negative is somewhere in the four hundred thousand, four fifty range.
Right, four fifty, four hundred fifty thousand, correct.
Which is not not awful, um even if we never increase, which we will. Uh, in next year's budget certainly, even if we never increase the amount that we put in that reserve fund right now, it will still get paid off. Um, so, in any event, um it's been moved and seconded, I think we've discussed this a fair bit. Uh, any questions for Leanne?
No, thank you, man.
Um, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, Leanne. Have a good night, if you.
I will. Have a good night too, I'll see you soon.
Next item, um. So discussion and possible action to appropriate twelve thousand dollars from capital non-recurring fund for the purpose of hiring a consultant to update the town's affordable housing plan. Which was originally done in twenty-one? Because it, I think it it's twenty-six that.
Yeah.
We're planning on doing this, originally Chris came to me and she's like, how do you want to do this? Do you want me to just expend my consulting line item and at the end of the year, if I'm over, I'm over? And I said, no, let's just do it clean, let's get the money appropriated from Board of Finance. And Board of Selectmen and town meeting, and we'll just have the money there, we'll pay the consultant. And um. Yeah, so look, I mean, there were a lot of towns that did not do an affordable housing plan when they should have. That are probably getting around to doing their first, I think you probably know that, I I know that for a fact. Towns were very slow.
What I heard today, all but two have finally.
Have done.
Yeah.
But it's taken five.
It's taken time, yeah.
And we were on it and we're gonna be on it again, it'll be out of the way, um.
What does this report end up presenting to us?
Uh, the the housing.
The availability of space.
No, it's it's proactive, it's to see how we can increase our housing stock to diversify our housing stock. Um, it, the planning commission, which is acting as the housing task force, is really calling this a housing. Um, plan as opposed to an affordable housing plan. Um, and we are getting grants to determine if we can increase our housing stock right on Main Street. So, right now, it's, it, the planning commission is working on it and to update the plan. To bring us to where they are and where we are, things have changed over the course of, things changed over the course of five years quite a bit. So, uh we're bringing in the consultant to update that plan to make it current, and I think we are at a good point in terms of. Maybe really trying to move forward with it, we have money from ARPA. Um, looks, we have money from DOH that we just got and we, you know, we're gonna try to work with CMDA to implement some of this. So, and we have the Mariners Way Task Force up and running, we have. Oh, like quarter of a million from the cannabis fund in there, I sent a letter out today. To a bunch of DOT folks, Bruce, uh Carlson, Jennifer and a few other people. Uh, about convening a meeting to see what we can do out on Mariners Way to maybe do some quality of, well. To do some infrastructure improvements, um. To maybe make investment uh a little bit more palatable, so, in any event. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion, I I don't know if I did it right, make a motion to appropriate the twelve thousand from the CNR. Thirty-three fifty for the purposes of hiring a consultant to update the town's affordable housing plans, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion.
Yeah, I I would just add, I am glad that we're doing this, I'm glad that we're staying on top of it and, you know, just reiterating what you were saying, Carl, I mean, this is going to. Um, it's not a report with data, it's gonna give us actions that different boards and commissions can take towards um helping to diversify housing stock. And to create, you know, to maximize the opportunities that we have as a community.
I love it, I mean, you know, it's, to me, the opportunity exists right now. To do this, to add housing. And that has only been positive in Old Sable Rock, everything we've done on this front has been extraordinary. And that's why Chris Costa is speaking at housing conferences and why she's so well-recognized, so.
And and I guess I would, I would just add, not for, not for you guys, but for anybody that's, you know, listening to this at some other time, right? A plan that we do at the town level, sometimes I think people think that it just sits on a shelf. But I think you can look at different things like the grant that we just got from DOH. Um, and looking at optimizing housing on Main Street, you know, that is in our downtown corridor, but also walkable to the train station. That was an activity that was identified in our plan.
Okay.
Looking at ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and making zoning changes to allow that. Um, that is something that has been in our plan as an activity, so there are things that have happened in town over the last many years that have been identified in plans.
Not only that, our zoning commission has been very proactive on this. ADUs existed before the Affordable Housing Plan existed. Um, our housing, our zoning commission allows for certain square footage of apartments. On Main Street, they are not, in other words, they want to encourage diverse housing on Main Street. Not palatial apartments on Main Street, now you can do that, but you might have to do a, what, seven hundred square foot apartment. So that that is more of an affordable rent and the purpose of the DOH housing, uh the DOH grant. And perhaps any other grants that we get that build on that DOH grant is to understand why people aren't doing it. And we wanna, we want to see if we can incent based upon groundwork that we are going to do with grant money. Uh, property owners to to make the leap and. I'm hopeful, I don't, I, uh there's certainly no guarantee, but um, you know, we'll see what happens, so. Looking for, I'm really looking forward to it. Alright, moved and seconded, all those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ready. Alright, so the next item is uh call of the town meeting, I'm gonna make a motion to accept it, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, and the call is uh deals with the fire truck, the consultant that we just talked about. And then the town reports, and we have a new, I just saw a draft of the cover the other day, it's beautiful. Um, but I'm not gonna spoil it, so it'll be a surprise. So, uh I, any questions on the call? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Actually gonna be able to attend this, I'm not traveling Thanksgiving.
You know what, I'm not either, and I'm, I, but I'm usually back for this, but.
I've been missing the last two, three years, I think.
Uh, refund a building permit, one of four Norwood, uh this looks like a solar project that didn't get done. Um, so I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All some favors. Blight ordinance, I um. Made changes uh and worked up to this, did, have you had a chance to look at it?
Yeah, uh the one piece I was confused about.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure, so the top, the top of the page has, still has a city of Norwalk. And I just wanted to make sure that that meant I was looking at something you did and that just, the header hadn't been deleted versus.
It just hadn't been.
Okay.
Yeah, I I, by the way, I, before I send that out to.
To the other boards and commissions.
I'll make sure that, yes.
And then is this, is the statute or the the reference, that symbol is legally fifty-eight A dash.
Oh, no, no, yeah, that's.
Okay, cool, just wanted to make sure that we.
Yes, um, so the only um. The only things I will mention on this is, uh I haven't talked to the building official about this. So, obviously, this is what Norwalk did. And uh, they appointed their building official. I'm gonna mention it to Tom, I'm not gonna insist on it, it could be the building official, it could be the fire marshal. Um, I don't, but I don't think it's gonna be a heavy workload, you know, it's going to be. Um, more looking around at properties, um I don't think Old Sable Rock is gonna demand a lot of this. But it certainly is a tool. And not only that, it has to go through town meeting, so this this will come to the next Court of Selectment meeting after I clean it up a little bit more. I did go through it um as best I could to kind of maybe take out any other references to the other town. Other than that, it's really a, it's mostly definitions. Um, and I know Kathy Connolly.
Yep.
Was on last time and. What I saw was, uh uh what she proposed was an actual ordinance. That would be separate and apart, because in this blight ordinance, it talks about a managed natural metal landscaping section. So, I happen to think that is a separate ordinance that, again, maybe. The planning commission, zoning commission, you wanna consider or not, I don't know. Um, but uh, anyway, that's, that's, I think this is protective of anybody who would like to have that. On their front lawn, um a managed natural landscape that is perhaps a pollinator garden or something, so. Um, anyway, with that, I just wanna, I'll clean this up a little bit more, Matt, you good?
Yeah, no, I have one piece that I think is missing and.
Yep.
Especially in light of your comments earlier, this is, I'm just using the Saber Point Dock and Dine Property as an example.
Yep.
Not saying that this is targeting it. Um, when we're looking at the ass- assigning fee fines, I see for blight upon, it's, this is. This is fifty-eight A dash four, B one, A, B, C, D.
One, fifty-eight A one.
Oh, fifty-eight A, sorry, four.
Oh, four, yep, four is right here, yeah.
Yeah, and then there's B.
C, yep.
Yeah, so then go down to D, so it, so A, B and C all talk about housing blight on different sized um apartment. Like managed apartment units, D talks about commercial real property.
Yep.
What would we do if we were in a situation um where somebody? The building burns down or, you know, they demo it, but then the the site is sitting vacant, so there's not any square footage of commercial real property. Are we doing it on the square footage of the entire parcel or, cause I I would think that it means the commercial building. It's, well, it says of any commercial building upon such real property, so I'm I'm wondering what we do when you have just a vacant site.
Um, it is.
Unless I'm missing it.
No, you're, I don't know that you are, uh. Uh, I thought there was something in here that talked about. Um, that talked about lots of, like a lot for parcels. Violation of any of the standards, so. Yeah, it. Let me, let me see if I can square that up.
Okay.
With um. Property maintenance violations shall also include.
Yeah, so that defines the violations, but then I don't see how they assign.
Yeah.
If there's not a commercial building on the lot, how they assign the fee or finances.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for moving this word.
This will be a process, this is not immediately gonna, you know, it's, you know, if it happens, it'll be sometime over the winter.
So it goes to the other boards and commissions for referral and then it'll come back to Board of Selectmen.
Yep, and then the Board of Selectmen can vote on it and determine whether they want to do a new ordinance.
And then the, because it's an ordinance, we haven't, I don't think I did an ordinance in the six years, that goes to just town meeting.
Yep. One maybe. Um. So, alright. I will uh work on that.
Great, thank you.
Appointment to the K, uh Judy Sullivan is recommended by the Board of Trustees over there. Uh, Rich Sirpa came off.
Okay.
So there's three town appointees and um. Uh, they've, actually, Rich has been on for a little while, um and I think uh. They'd like to have Judy on, so Judy, former executive director at the Chamber. Um, and uh it's the recommendation, recommendation of the Board of Trustees at the K, and I have no objection to that certainly. Of Trustees at the Kate, and I have no objection to that certainly. Uh, Judy's been a wonderful partner wherever she's been. So. All right, any objection to that? I'll move Judy Sullivan to the Kate Board of Trustees.
Second.
Okay, um, discussion.
I'm glad she's finding a way to stay active and everything.
Yeah. All right, hearing none, uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so what I thought we would do now is um go into executive session briefly. Um, and what we will do is I'll show you. Uh, what's gonna be the new probate court. We can just. I can pause this.
Yep.
And we'll come back.
Okay.
How's that? And I wanted to show you the uh what we're doing, all right, so.
And we should, thank you, Scott. We should motion to go into executive session.
Right. Uh, yeah, and I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, it is seven oh two. We're out of executive session. Uh, no motions were made, no votes were taken. Um, at this point, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.